This is Chris with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. We're not due to start until about 6:00. So you can kick back, enjoy some music, beverage of your favorite choice, and we'll get going closer to 6:00. So this meeting is streaming live to YouTube. But right now, the only thing that's streaming is, well, will be just a screen that shows that the meeting is going to start at 6:00. So there's nothing audible or visible until the meeting gets going. So thanks a lot. Hang tight, and we'll be with you shortly.
Did it work?
Yeah, I just grabbed tongs and tried to grab it out and I broke them down. So I just used a tongs to break it up.
Oh, cool.
I put barbecue sauce up there and a little bit of buns.
Hey, Jer. The lady said, "Thanks for being prompt." The lady said, "Thanks for being prompt."
Oh, I didn't see a lady. I only talked to the guy, the boyfriend, and probably the boyfriend's dad or something. No, they were nice. It was done in five minutes.
Well, that's what she sent me a thing like at 5:10.
Oh, that's good. I wasn't paying attention. I just was trying to get there.
Yeah.
No, he came. He had left it in the garage because he was thinking, "We might want to plug it in right out." It's like, "Yep, if you don't mind, we're right up a little bit, right down a little bit." Put the phone on it, Alex's phone. So it starts to charge. We're good. That's actually...
Is it the same?
It's mint condition.
It's the same as my desk.
Yeah, exactly. So it's sitting in the big room right now until I can get it a little re-cleared. I still got to figure out how to, figure out how to get those sound things up.
Yes.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Ryman. If you want to try sharing your screen briefly, just to make sure that works, we'll check it, and if it looks like it's okay, then we'll switch back to the main screen until you're ready.
Can you see it?
Looks good. Okay.
Okay. Will I see myself when I'm talking?
Yep, screen looks good. Pointers look good.
Okay. Will I see myself when I'm presenting?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and stop that chair for the moment so I can take care of some other questions. So thank you. Looks like we're all set.
Okay.
And yes, I see that note, Katie. If there's a person with a question... Oops, get my screen up here. Yeah, Karina, hopefully I'm pronouncing your name right. If you've got a question, why don't you go ahead and type it into the chat there if you would? Good folks coming in, this is Chris with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. We'll start the hearing at 6:00 sharp. Until then, we'll just be hanging out, waiting for people to come in. This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube in addition to being recorded. Your mics aren't on, your cameras aren't on, so really nothing for you to worry about there until the meeting gets rolling. Just wanted to make you aware. So hang tight until 6:00, and we'll be right with you. Thank you. Hi, this is Chris with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. Thanks for all of you who are here, ready for the public hearing. That starts at 6:00. That's just three minutes away. When that time comes, I'll flip on the camera and start the meeting off, and we will roll through the agenda. This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube. Your mics and cameras are off at the moment, but when it comes time for testimony, just wanted you to be aware. And we're also recording this for the public record. So I'll be with you in just three minutes or so. Thank you very much. Oh, good evening. My name is Chris Havel with the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. I'll be running the public hearing tonight. We also have one of our senior managers, Katie Gauthier, and permit specialist Allison Mangini to help run things smoothly. Just as a reminder, we are digitally recording this meeting for the record, and we're also streaming it live to YouTube for people who just wanted to observe the meeting without testifying. I'll explain what we're doing and why. We're going to hear from the applicant, followed by testimony, and then we will adjourn. Let me get my screen going here. So it's a pretty straightforward agenda. And we do have quite a few people signed up to testify, and quite a few more people who may want to testify. So I'd encourage, when we get to that point, just to sort of stay focused on that three-minute time limit, if you can. The Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, just for your background, is responsible for administering the state's ocean shore laws put into effect by the 1967 Beach Bill. Under those statutes, a permit is required for any construction or alteration located seaward of what's called the statutory vegetation line or the existing line of established vegetation, whichever is further landward. So the ocean shore boundary does move over time. For ocean shore alteration permits, a public hearing must be held if requested by the applicant or by 10 or more interested persons. And in this case, we did have more than 10 written requests for the hearing on case file 2998-21, which is a request for dune grading to perform ongoing maintenance, access, preservation along a 500-foot section of dune within the city of Manzanita city limits. The purpose of the hearings tonight is to take in public testimony on the permit application from John Ryman, JPR Consulting. The application requests the dune grading and four dune restoration on the ocean shore. The standard for reviews are contained in Oregon Administrative Rule 736-20. OPRD rules list a number of considerations that must be addressed, and those include project need, protection of public rights, public costs, available alternatives, compliance with land use goals, local comprehensive plans, scenic concerns, recreation use, beach access, safety, resource considerations such as impact of fish and wildlife and historic and cultural archaeological sites. There's a long list. They're online. And if you signed up tonight, you would have received an email from me earlier today with links to our online materials. We'll also follow up after the meeting with a link leading you to the application and the webpages where you can find this information in more detail. I want to be clear, no decisions will be made tonight. Following the hearing, our department staff will review the record and do their research, including both oral and written comments that have been submitted. And only after they do that work will a written decision be prepared. By law, a decision must be made on each application within 45 days following this hearing, and that would put us at March 21, 2022 or earlier. We will use the email address you registered with tonight to notify you when the permit decision is made and provide a link to the permit decision documents online. Our hearing procedure this evening will be this. First, I'll call out the applicant, and John will make a brief presentation describing the proposal and the need for the project. And following the applicant's presentation, I will call on people who sent me an email indicating they wish to testify after registering in the order I received those emails. So I have a list, and I'll run through it. When I call your name, then you'll be unmuted. Then you'll be able to speak. And I'll have more instructions about that when we get to it. When you do speak, you'll be stating your name. When you do speak, you'll be stating your name. Your address needs to be clear for the record. And then you'll be able to speak for three minutes during the public testimony. I'll let you know if you're going overtime. And out of courtesy to everybody here, please wrap it up if I do interrupt you. I apologize for doing that if it comes to that. But we've got quite a few people here this evening who will make sure everybody gets a chance to say their piece. After I run through the list that I have, we will open it up and ask if anybody else who is here at the hearing wants to speak. So just because you're not on my list doesn't mean you won't get to speak. It means you'll wait until after I've worked my way through my own list, and then we'll open it up. And anybody who wants to speak will be able to. If you have questions as part of your testimony, you'll need to state those questions as issues of concern for the record. There's no discussion here tonight. This is not a Q and A. Our materials are online. You're able to look at those and read those. But the purpose tonight here is testimony, where you speak to us, we listen, we take that and consider it and work that into the report that we're going to prepare. So along those lines, if you have written testimony that you'd like to submit after the hearing, while the formal written public comment period for this permit is closed, after this hearing, you'll be able to send us an email to follow up to this hearing. And I'll have that address up on the screen when we get to the end. So if you prefer to submit written comments after the hearing rather than testify, you'll be able to do that. We'll leave the record open until February 10, 2022, 5:00 p.m. if you want to submit something in writing with your testimony or instead of your testimony, that's completely up to you. So at this time, I would like to invite John Reiman, the applicant, to come up and present the proposal. And then when he's done, we'll have him step back and start working our way through the public testimony list. So, John, I will turn that over to you. Are you ready?
Yes, I'm ready. I guess I'm not seeing... Do I need to start my video? Or am I just talking? Can you hear me?
I'm sorry. John, it's funny, I can see your words flowing across. But I'm not hearing you. Hold on a sec.
How about now?
Yep, they are coming through for me now. It may have just been a problem on my side. So you should be able to hit the share screen button and present your information.
Okay, you can hear me now?
Yep, all good.
Okay. My name is John Reiman. I'm a civil engineer and a land use planner. Oregon State University graduate in 1984. I have represented our subarea for dune grading projects since 2007. This would be our third dune grading project within our subarea. I am a beachfront homeowner. Address is 8827 Spyglass Lane. I was born and raised in Oregon. My permanent address is Bethany area in Portland, 14512 Northwest Oak Shadow Court. Grew up in that area, including my wife of 37 years and our three boys. I grew up going to the Rockaway Beach and have always loved the beach and still do. Was very fortunate to be able to fulfill our dream of owning a beach home in my adult years. And we're so happy that we're here in Manzanita. We love it. I'm also active in the Manzanita Niaconny Dunes Management Association and have been since 2008. So rather than going through a full presentation of the application materials, which have been... are online and have been available for a while, I thought I read through all of the written comments submitted during the public notice period and wanted to address what I saw as consistent concerns voiced in those comments. So I've kind of packaged them and wanted to address them in that regard because I only have about 10 minutes. So the first, what I saw was a common concern was flooding and climate change impacts. We are in a literal cell that has an accretion condition versus erosion. A literal cell is defined as a coastal compartment that contains a complete cycle of sedimentation. Now, our little... liberals, there's literal cells all up and down the West Coast and all beaches. Our literal cell is is established by Niaconny Mountain to the north and the Haylen River to the south in the jetty. And like I said earlier, we are in an accretion condition. And the 1995 MARA report and study, the Four Dune Management Plan, which was adopted by the city and the state and codified in 95-6, the city level, shows that the four dune has expanded to the west about 100 to 250 feet and vertically as much as 25 feet from 1967 to 1995. This is a good thing from the standpoint of protection from winter storms and flooding, which looks like there was a lot of concern of the people who made comments. Now going to... I'm going to scroll down to this first graphic. I don't know. This is all in the application is our area that we're... of our proposed project. The second map is zooming in on that area. And the blue area is the area we plan to grade. And the green area is the area we plan to add the... remove the excess sand onto the open beach, upper beach. The red line to the right is the foundation line and the homes. And that dark black dash line is a cross-section line that represents the location of the cross-section for Exhibit 3.3. And that's what I want to focus on. So this cross-section is showing the red line, vertical line, is where the homes are. And going to the left is out to the beach. The dashed line that you can see, and I'm showing with the arrow, is the existing ground out to the open beach. There's two hummocks in the secondary dune, right there and right here in the dashed lines. And then this lower dash line is the open beach. If you'll notice, the four dune, the main four dune is the dashed line above the horizontal red line here where my arrow is. The horizontal red line is the base flood elevation plus four feet, which is the requirement as established that we can not... we can grade below that per the Four Dune Management Plan. What I'm trying... what I want to get to is that the dashed line in the four dune in this area where the arrow is, we are not touching. And it's close to 250 feet wide. And that's a good thing. We are actually above the base flood elevation, which that's what FEMA establishes for flood insurance. Our study is added four feet as another level of factor of safety. And our existing dune is at 40 feet, which is another seven, six to seven feet higher than the plan requires. So from that standpoint, we have a pretty safe and solid width and height of a dune that could handle storms and even climate change issues, possibly the ocean rise. We have a really good factor of safety there, I believe. So from a standpoint of that flooding and climate change, I believe that we'd address that. The other item that was a common concern was study is old and outdated and the impact of wildlife. I'm not an expert on this, but I have talked to the experts specifically about this issue, including more recently Jonathan Allen, who's a coastal geomorphologist with the Oregon Department of Geology and Minerals Industries, Dogami. He presented at a recent City of Manzanita workshop last month, which I'm sure some of you partook in. And I had to... I have had discussions with Jonathan on and off since 2018 when we first started our process of preparing our plans and submitting our application to the city and the state. From my discussions and his presentation, in short, from what I understand, the key is not to remove sand from the literal cell and make sure you establish any vegetation removed. We are not removing any of the sand from the literal cell. The excess sand will be deposited on the Upland Open Beach. And so at that... that area will then be slowly removed by winds and the ocean wave changes in the winter and the summer. And timelines in geomorphology span decades. So a study that addresses managing accretion, which we have, sand accumulation, I believe, is still viable. In addition, our application is also currently being reviewed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, it's a federal agency, the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, which includes a federal consistency review as a requirement of the Coastal Zone Management Act and also being reviewed by the Department of Environmental Quality. Within these reviews, other agencies will be asked for comment, including, and this is getting to the habitat issue, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, National Marine and Fisheries Service, NIMF. As mentioned in our application, we also consulted with Matt Hunter, the Oregon Marines Resources Manager with ODF&amp;W with regard to razor clams. This is the first time a Manzanita dune grain application has gone through this level of review. I believe this also speaks to the issue of addressing the old and outdated process and concerns about wildlife impacts. And we'll get that information as we finalize our application process with these other agencies. Impacts on beachgoers. The proposed grading plan, as shown in Exhibit 3.3, which I've got up on the screen, will regrade the two westerly hummocks that I referred to earlier, that one and that one, to create more of a gentle slope to the beach to help with more accessible beach access from public streets out to the open beach. The grade that we show is that is the darker red line, and it says 3% on it. Just for reference, the cross-slope of a sidewalk, a public sidewalk on a public street is 2%. So that's a pretty gentle slope, and it will help folks getting access out from our our access points 15, 16, and 17. And then it'll slope down at 30% to match the existing open shore, open beach. That's about a three-to-one slope, which would be similar to what you would see in a grassed area going down to a baseball field at a school. So still much more gentler than what we are currently experiencing out there, especially at access point 17. I really do believe this will create a much safer access to the beach and on the beach. There are no guarantees that the future winter storms won't impact the dunes again and create steep banks. It's a dynamic situation, and that's occurring all and up and down the Oregon coast. This is why this area is allowed to be managed on a periodic basis, which we try to do every three to five years. All graded areas will be replanted, reestablished with European beach grass per the management plan standards. All costs associated with the grading and replanting will be paid for by the subarea plan applicants. In closing, it's my hope that this process, this new process that we're going through, will establish a new, better standard for review and approvals of grading and planting plans in the future for the city of Manzanita. And that's my presentation.
All right, Mr. Reiman, thank you very much. I am going to put you into the attendee pool, if you don't mind. And... That's odd. Sorry about that. One more sec.
Should I stop screen sharing?
Yes, please. And yeah, and I actually can take care of that. That's all right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So, thank you. Because of the limited time available, time for public testimony will be limited to three minutes per person. I'll be enabling you to speak in turn, as I said, according to the list I have, and then we'll be opening it up to anybody else who doesn't happen to be on my list. We are recording. This is streaming to... live to YouTube. To speak when we enable YouTube, you can either click the microphone symbol in Zoom to take the little hash off of it, or you can hold your spacebar down. And as long as you're holding your spacebar down, keep your finger on it, you'll be able to speak. And if you remove your hand from your spacebar, your speaking time will be over. I will let you know when you're at time. I apologize for interrupting you if you happen to still be going when you get to three minutes. But when that happens, if you would wrap it up as quickly as possible, and then I will be remuting you and letting the next person come up. When you do speak, please state your name and address for the record before you testify. And with that, I will bring our first person in, Bert Gregory. You're being allowed to talk. You don't have to turn your camera on if you don't want to, and you can go ahead and testify.
Okay, thank you. My name is Bert Gregory. Our family owns 8830 Spindrift Lane in Manzanita, just north of the proposed site. It's soon to become our permanent home. Our current address is 103 West Boston, Seattle, 98119. I must admit, I don't understand if this is a good thing or a bad thing. Certainly seems to be important to our neighbors, and so I respect that very, very much. I have a few items that I appreciate being reviewed by Oregon Parks. The proposal's context within Oregon Parks' Dune Management Plan, if there is one. If environmental studies and impact analysis is needed to be performed by Oregon Parks related to the proposal. For instance, reviewing if this is good for the dunes, beach, and adjoining properties long-term, including during storm events and king tide wave events. Reviewing the impact this proposal will have on the dunes to the north and south of the proposal. Reviewing if the steep grading transitions north and south are safe and acceptable. Reviewing the impact modifying the dunes have in high wind events, as we recently had, and the impact to the structures north and east of the proposal, potentially damaging sand and other items. Reviewing the measures proposed to hold the sand in place in case of drought until such time as the dune grass has grown and secured the sand. And then reviewing measures in place to prevent invasives for the graded area, such as the really sad Scotch broom that has overtaken the Haylen State Park. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Bert. Next, we have Art Lawrence. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing your name correctly.
All right.
Yep, Art, we can hear you fine. You can go ahead and testify, starting with your name. So you are on mute right now, so you can either hold your space button down or tap the microphone key.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. My name is Art Lawrence, 8840 Spindrift. I am the neighbor to Bert that just spoke to you, and Bert just bought that house. And I look forward to meeting you, Bert. Let me tell you a little bit of history. I bought my lot in 1978 and built the house in 78, '79. That was before the jetty was lengthened on the Haylen River. We used to just walk right out the front of our house and go down to the beach. Now that the accretion is taking... Now that the accretion has taken place, I think a manmade cause brought this sand to us. The, the jetty was put in, in like 1980, 81, something like that. And all of a sudden, all of this sand from the rocks that tumble in the river, that's how you make sand, is rocks tumbling and breaks off little bits of the rocks and we get sand. Now there was more sand deposited out from the river and then, and then that jetty did not protect us from the southwest winds that typically came in and scoured out the beachfront. So two things happened. They have more sand and we don't have the scouring effect that has taken place. Now we get the king tides come in and you get a great big bank that you have to go hike up and down, and that's not safe. And I think that we need to go and realize that history has changed things since the extension of the jetty. Thank you for that time and thank you, John Ryman, for a great presentation.
All right, Art, thank you very much. And next, Deborah Chapola. Hopefully I didn't just completely butcher your name. Deborah, if you are ready.
Hi, I actually wasn't aware that I signed up to testify and I don't have anything prepared, so I'm gonna pass.
Okay, totally fine. Thank you very much. And next, Kim Rosenberg. I have you up next. Let me get down to you here. Kim, if you'd like to testify, you're able to now.
Can you hear me?
Yes, certainly can.
Okay, my name is Kim Rosenberg. I live at 280 Edmund Lane in Manzanita, Oregon. And I'm not a scientist, but I know that the body of scientific knowledge about climate change, sea level rise, and our collective impact on the environment has grown and changed since 1997, when the zoning ordinances in Manzanita allowed for view grading. Pretending like the physical nature of the world hasn't changed since 1997 is like turning your back on a sneaker wave and hoping you don't get wet. Those of us living here in the winter know that the king tides are higher and the storm surges more severe. According to Meg Reed, coastal shores specialist for DLCD, dunes not only sequester carbon, reducing greenhouse gases, they're the first line of defense in protecting existing homes from flooding and erosion. There are good reasons to grade dunes, but a view isn't one of them. Habitat restoration of the snowy plover using dune grading has been done on the coast by state parks, but afterwards use of those areas is strictly limited, so the plover is safe and undisturbed by people. Clearing the dunes in front of rental homes with beach access trails frequented by loose dogs and lots of people isn't likely a good fit as far as nesting habitat goes. And removing the 2.9 acres of dunes and dumping 9,000-plus cubic yards of sand on the beach floor will not only destroy the habitat of every living thing in those 2.9 acres, it will also suffocate any bivalves and shore creatures underneath where the sand is dumped. And while the European beach grass is invasive, it also holds the sand in place, sequesters carbon, and protects those existing homes. I know the Manzanita Comprehensive Plan is in need of an update, but it's on the city's website and it's recognized by the state of Oregon as the acknowledged comprehensive plan. Policy seven in the plan states, "The plan is not to be used for the benefit of a few property owners or special interests, but for the city as a whole." When an ocean view becomes a commodity, the monetary value becomes the priority, not the loss of habitat for shorebirds or wildlife, not the carbon sequestered, and certainly not the beauty of the dunes themselves. Tom McCall's radical notion that the Oregon coast belongs to the public has protected some of the most beautiful beaches and dunes in the world. The protections put in place decades ago are meant to make our coast a place for everyone to enjoy now and in the future. Until we have an up-to-date dune management plan using the very best science available, I would ask that this application be denied. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kim. Right, three minutes, too. Our next speaker, Karina, if you're available and ready and everything is working, let me give you a shot here. So are you able to testify, Karina?
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, here you are fine, thank you.
I agree with Kim. And the first speaker said he wasn't sure if it would be a good thing or a bad thing. And I personally, I love to climb on the dunes. I don't wish for a flat entrance to the beach. The little bit of climbing is wonderful and I am concerned about the seabird, the sea life. And my question is, why building so close? Why? And whose benefit from this huge project? Why not back, other areas, not on the beach? People are moving here for the wild aspect of it, not for a LA-style flat beach. So I would say no to this project right on the beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Next up, Deborah Simmons. Deborah, if you are ready.
Yes, can you hear me, Chris?
Yep, loud and clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for hosting this. We live at 256 Treasure Cove Lane. We're two blocks off of the ocean. We've been here for over six years. We lived up in Neokani for 25 years before that. In the past six years, we've watched the ocean bring debris up our street farther and farther each year. There's no way, I'm convinced, that this grading is going to be a safe thing. The king tides, the surf surges, all impact the houses that are in our neighborhood. There's a house down the street that puts out sand block or sandbags when the weather turns bad. So there's a real, I mean, we see it. We see the logs in the road. We see the sand coming up the street. It's, it's visible. I can send you pictures. I agree with Kim. I went back to the comprehensive plan that says the plan is intended to protect the national, natural environment. The plan must have the majority of the community. We've never voted on this. It's never been brought to us. It was simply a permit that was approved by the city manager. And again, the plan is not to be used for the benefit of a few property owners or special interests. I hope that you reconsider. I hope that we, as stewards of our beaches and our coastlines, take care of it for the benefit of all, not just a few. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Next, Sandy Wood. Sandy, if you're ready. Yep, I can see that you are off mute, but I can't hear anything quite yet. Okay, Sandy, it sounds like you might be having microphone problems. I'm going to, we'll just bump you back out briefly. Hopefully you have a chance to get those fixed and then we'll bring you back in. So we won't miss you. Just gonna make a note here to bring it back. Just for the moment, we're gonna put you back in the pool. We will come back to you. Ivana Yavino. Let's get you up next, if you are ready. You should be able to speak now. Ivana, you ready?
Yes, I am.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Ivana Yavino. I live at 352 Jackson Way in Manzanita, and I'm a full-time resident here. And first, I want to tell you thank you for letting me speak tonight. I am testifying tonight in opposition to the proposed for dune grading for view. My question to the proponent here, the proponents, is have they really done their homework? Is this proposal part of an entire coastline plan as required by Goal 18? Goal 18 states that, quote, "Dune grading cannot be carried out effectively in a lot-by-lot basis." For dune grading needs to be planned for an area-wide basis, because what you do to preserve your ocean view affects entire stretches of the coastline. As John Donne said, "No man is an island." Mr. Ryman said that there's accretion happening and he's basing this all on a 1994 study that was done. And I feel like things are changing so quickly now with climate change. Scientists and ecologists, which I don't think he's one of, are amazed at how quickly things are changing. And I am sure that what was decided back in 1994 and 1997 is not, this is 30 years ago. It can't be true today. We need to review those studies. We need to do more studies. I also feel like have they ascertained the ecological and economic impact of bulldozing and plowing 10,000 cubic feet of sand during a time when there's going to be bird migration as well as spring break? So birds are gonna be coming to the state park and people. And I'm sure people don't want to spend money to have to sit next to a bulldozer plowing sand. Have they really done environmental studies to see the effects of sand dumping on crabs, clams, isopods, and other wildlife? And then he mentioned replanting European beach grass. Well, at the city council, the scientist that he spoke of said that European beach grass is the wrong grass, that that's the one that causes the highest dunes. So unless he wants to keep doing this over and over again, maybe he should be planting with American grass or native grass. I say, let's have a moratorium on dune grading until we can create a beachwide plan backed by science and science of today, not 30 years ago. Because what's the rush? He doesn't have to take down the sands. Nothing's happening to anybody. Nobody's gonna die. If anything, you want to keep those dunes up because that's your protection against the ocean. In summary, are we going to allow any group or corporation with enough resources to do what they like with the beach in front of them? Oregon is a beautiful state who wisely decided many years ago that the beach is public property. A precedent has been set this year in Cannon Beach to end dune grading for ocean view. And I hope that we have the courage and forethought for our future to do the same. Thank you.
Okay, Ivana, thank you so much. Next, Amy Blue. Let me get you up here. Okay, Amy, whenever, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Chris. Can you hear me?
Yep, loud and clear, thank you.
Okay, great. For the record, my name is Amy Blue and I live at 574 Ridge Road in Manzanita. And my husband, Don Matthew Blue, is also on the line with me. Our main concerns are the plants, grasses, and animals that inhabit the dunes in Manzanita, in addition to the relationship between dune grading and flood control. Dunes are a valuable first line of defense against flooding caused by king tides and storm surges, which we have seen recently. Flattening the dunes leaves a built area behind them much more vulnerable. I'd like the Parks Department to put a stop to this dune grading permit for a select number of property owners just for ocean views. The city of Manzanita's sand study is over 25 years old. The city's economy is hugely dependent on the beauty of its beaches and dunes, and I'm concerned about the public's interest in this affecting the city's economy by allowing dune grading. Mr. Ryman explained how the sand would be deposited, which is a concern. I've been informed that in Cannon Beach, the excess sand that was deposited on the beach from for dune grading showed damage to young clams by suffocation of this practice in addition to the occasional flooding. A couple weeks ago, I took a video of an owl that dove down and grabbed a creature in the dunes, and it just really makes me sad to think it'll be destroyed. I just want to end by saying again that for dune grading for ocean views is not in the public interest, and I think the Parks Department should not allow this permit to be considered until the city of Manzanita has updated their sand study. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Amy. And I understand you have one other person there who'd like to testify as well, is that right?
Uh, no, we just did that together.
Okay, all right.
I spoke for him.
Thank you. All right, next, Steve Rammer. There you go. When you're ready, Steve.
Hi, Chris, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we bought our home here in 2001, and one of the main reasons my wife Jennifer and I moved here was the beauty and the beaches are available to all of us. We're also, we lived in California back in the 70s and 80s, and some of the beaches are private beaches. So one of the huge blessings for everybody in Oregon is equal access to these beaches. And so they are a huge resource to both the people that live in Manzanita and the visitors that come here from all over the world. They're worth protecting and they should be valued for both the people that come here as well as all the wildlife that lives here. They are not the realm of just the lucky few who have the resources to alter their environment. That's not how it should go. I oppose this message or this, this bill immensely. The beaches are for all of us and I'd like to see it stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So I'm about to embarrass myself with the name, Kailene Weininger. You can file a grievance if I just massacred your name.
Hi, this is Kailene Weiniger, and you pronounced it quite well. I live at 37 Portland Avenue in Manzanita. I've been a full-time resident here since 2016. And I frequently walk the beach and I do know that area. Sometimes I climb up and walk in the dunes there as well. And I would just like to agree with several other people that spoke and say that I see no reason for granting this permit to a few. I didn't prepare to talk tonight because I didn't think I would have the opportunity, but thank you for giving me the opportunity. I just, I noticed on the application that's online that in the section where it asks for a reason for this permit, there is really no reason given. And so I heard Mr. Ryman say something about a gentler access, but I was recently down there with a hiking group, a group of ladies. Most of us are in our late 60s, early 70s, and we had no problems accessing the beach there. So I think the whole purpose of the permit is so that the people renting those houses can have a view. And I suggest that if they want to view the ocean, they simply walk down to the beach and the ocean's right there. So I would hope that this application be denied. Thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, Kailene, thank you very much. Coming back to Sandy Wood. Sandy, we'll get you back in. Hopefully your mic is working now. Let's give that a shot. And once again, Sandy, I can see that you're unmuted, but I cannot hear you. Katie Allison, can either one of you hear Sandy? Just want to make sure it's not me that's having a problem.
No, I can't hear her.
Okay. I'm sorry, Sandy. We're having trouble hearing you. It's not even just faint, it's just missing. So hang tight and when we get to the end of the evening, we'll have an email address, a fax number, and a mailing address up. we'll have an email address, a fax number, and a mailing address up. And if you can get us your comments in writing by email or by fax, if people still do that, by the date that I'll put up on the screen, February 10th, then we'll be able to get your comments on the record and consider them when we're evaluating the permit. I have... Sorry, Sandy, I'm gonna be rude and kick you back over to the pool there. I have exhausted my existing list. If there is somebody here who would like to speak, if you would raise your hand, and we'll work through those raised hands one at a time until we are finished. You should see the raised hand icon on your screen. It should be yellow, either be at the top or the bottom, depending on how you have your software set up. And I'm gonna wait here for five minutes while people consider whether they would wish to testify. If you can't find the raised hand symbol, you can also just go into the chat and just type a message in. All right, we got a couple here. Hold on a second. All right, Jeffrey Sunshine, we're gonna go with you first.
Hi, Jeff Sunshine. My wife here is Ruth. We live at Lake Fair Circle. Not Lakeview Drive, I'm sorry, over by the golf course. But we're on the beach all the time. We've been here about a year, and I'm a bird watcher. And the area of the dunes that they're talking about is where the snowy clovers breed. And the snowy clovers are almost an endangered species. And I'm concerned that disturbing the dunes can disturb the snowy clover nesting grounds, which, you know, could cause the endangered species to become even more extinct than they are now. We're fortunate to have that special area, which is roped off and tied off, and people ignore it now by letting their dogs run loose, which you're not supposed to do. But I'm afraid this will disturb it even more. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey. Karina, I do show that you got your hand up. I do know that you've already testified. I'm gonna check to make sure nobody else wants to go first. And then we will take some additional brief testimony. Jessica, we'll get you up here first.
Hi, my name is Jessica Schaefer, and I live at 9180 Windward Lane in Manzanita. I don't have anything new to add. I just want to go on record saying that I do oppose the application, and I would like to see it denied until there's more research and planning done around this issue.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Jessica. Okay, Jim Woodruff. Oops, there we go. Jim, you'll need to either unmute, press the spacebar. There you go. Thank you.
Hi, yes, this is Jim Woodruff from 8830 Glen Esalen Lane. So actually, on the map that you were showing earlier. And while our house would benefit from an increased view, my, the only thing I would add here is I think it does detract from the nature and the natural beauty of the beach itself when the dunes are graded down. And I think it disrupts the experience you have on the beach, so I oppose the dune grading. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Jim.
Hi, I'm DeeDee Rahala. I live on Chinook, and I have nothing new to add. I would just like to, second what Jessica Schaefer said, I would like more time spent on this study, and I do oppose it.
Okay, thank you, DeeDee. Oops, sorry. Kim Rosenberg.
Let's do it.
Actually, this is Ben Rosenberg, husband of Kim Rosenberg. I live at 280 Edmund Lane with my wife, Kim. And it is my belief that most of the homes on the permit are coincidentally STR owners, short-term rental owners. And this is about a better view of the ocean, primarily why they're putting in this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Karina, I'll go ahead and, sorry, I had you up briefly and then back down. If you've got some additional testimony, you did have about a minute and a half left from your earlier testimony. Is there something you'd like to add?
Thank you, Chris. I was a bit nervous, so I forgot to say that I have been a coastal for 40 years and 10 years in Manzanita. Four, five, four-door cast lane. I'm on the beach almost every day, every single day of the year. And about the view, so much damage has been done in the name of the view. It's more about living in the view than just looking at it. So please leave this natural beach wild with its hills and the dunes as it is. And just, yes, who is benefiting from this big project? It's not nature or the birds. Thank you.
Thank you, Karina. Okay, I see no more hands raised, so we will wait a couple of minutes. Oops. Saw a hand briefly raised. I'm not quite quick enough. Here we go. Jean Dowell.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, Jean, we can hear you.
Hi, thank you for taking my hand. My name is Jean Dowell. We own a home at 295 Edmund Lane. We purchased our home in Manzanita 11 years ago based on the natural beauty of the beach. We walk the beach when we are there. We are part-time homeowners. And I have to say, when we walk the beach, it's far more interesting to look at the ocean, the beach, and the sand dunes than to look at homes, especially homes that are very elevated, and they're trying to capture a view by removing some of the spectacular natural beauty that Manzanita has to offer. We would like this application denied. We would like Manzanita to preserve the natural beauty that does exist. Thank you for your time.
Jean, I do see your hand back up. I just wanted to make sure I didn't cut you off prematurely there. Did you have something else you wanted to add?
No, I don't have anything else to add. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll wait just another two minutes or so, in case somebody else wants to speak. Okay, I want to thank everybody for spending the evening sharing your views. We will take them, not just make them part of the record, but study them and review them as we're preparing our report with the permit decision. As I said earlier, the record will remain open until 5:00 PM on February 10th, 2022. I'm gonna close the public hearing at this time and 45 days from today. Within 45 days of today, we will issue our report and findings, and you'll get an email about that. If you would like to submit follow-up materials related to this hearing, you can do it in a couple of ways. You'll see up on the screen now an email address, fax number, and a physical mailing address. Let me also give you in the chat that information. It should be there for you now. I'll leave this up until people leave the hearing. But I want to thank you very much coming to a hearing like this and speaking your piece. It's an essential part of not just good government, but the way we manage the ocean shore. And I appreciate you staying engaged on these kinds of issues. So thank you very much, and I will be the last one out. So for the rest of you, you can go enjoy your evening.